Ladies and gentlemen, we will go ahead and get started. I think we've got all the council here. Well, good afternoon. It is February 18th, 2020, 6:02. We're here at City Hall at 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And the Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. At this time, I would like to introduce our honorary City Council member, Beckett Rowe, of Acton Elementary School, Granbury ISD. Let's give her a big hand. Beckett, thank you very much. Beckett Rowe is a...you can't see her.
No.
Stand up there for her, Beckett. Show them how pretty she is. There she is. There she is. There you go. Don't worry, Beckett. They said that about me when I first started too. They couldn't see me after I started. Beckett is a fifth grader at Acton Elementary. She was selected as the Student Council President this year and has been a council member every year. Beckett is a true leader and leads by great example. She is a stellar student and sets the bar high for herself. Teachers can always count on Beckett to do the right thing and also help others. At Acton Elementary, we focus on character traits each month: courage, positivity, wisdom, dependability, enthusiasm, kindness, and integrity. Beckett exudes each one of these. She is one incredible girl. So, thank you, Beckett, for joining us on City Council. Would you like to say anything to anybody out there? Pull right on up there to the mic.
Thank you for having me. Really, all that's safe.
You are so welcome. You are so welcome. And I think Beckett has her...who's your...your principal's up there, out there? What's her name?
Ms. Bowman.
Ms. Bowman?
Ms. Bowman.
Raise your hand out there. There she is. And your mother's out there, right? Your mother's out there. What's her name?
Anna Rowe.
Anna Rowe. So, where's she at? Where's her at? There she goes. She'll be the one taking pictures, right?
Probably.
Okay, probably. Okay. Well, we're glad to have you here, so we're gonna help...she's gonna help us get through some of our consent agendas. So, thank you for being here. I'd like to have our deacon, Greg McAllister, of the St. Francis Cabrini Catholic Church, lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge, led by Beckett Rowe, our honorary council member. All right, please.
Please join me. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Dear and wise, loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here this evening. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for the life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance, and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In Scripture, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time, a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them this evening. Please give assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Granbury. It is in your name blessed that we pray. Amen. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen.
Please follow me and look closer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. It's good to see such a great crowd out there. Beckett, you drew a big crowd, okay? At this time, we've got some presentations, and I'm gonna step down to the podium down here and get those started off. Holy moly, we got a bunch of presentations, don't we? Our first presentation, we'd like to recognize Robert Silvestri. Robert, come on up, and anybody that's with Robert. I'd like to call right out here. Julie, you wanna come up here with me? I'm gonna read the certificate here, and then I think Julie has a presentation also. But, Robert, first of all, we want to recognize you for all that you do for the community. You know, whenever we have any events out there from Memorial Lane, we have them out on the square. As you all know, Robert plays his bagpipes. And that's...I tried to play them one time, and it's not an easy task. It takes a lot of wind. I had that.
You got plenty.
Just did not know how to distribute it, okay? But he does a great job. He's been doing it for a long time for us, and you know, Robert's getting ready to go on a trip with the whole group of folks, and it's like a band of bagpipers. And so, he's...we wanna, you know, congratulate him on that and wish him the best luck on his competition stuff. But for the things that he's done for Granbury, you know, it's just priceless what he does, and he volunteers to do this always at no cost. And so, we wanna...we wanna recognize him for doing that for the city of Granbury, and I'm sure he will continue to do that. So, if you've never heard him play his bagpipes, it's amazing. It's amazing. So, Robert, I'm gonna read the certificate here. This certificate is awarded to Robert Silvestri in honor of his dedicated participation in patriotic celebrations in Granbury, Texas, signed by me, Ninhua, the mayor, and the city of Granbury. I'm gonna present this to you. Turn around here. That's what it says. We're all about pictures. Hey, Robert, and I think they've...
Robert, I'd also like...those of us that are with Friends in Memorial Lane, would you come up and gather around Robert? Back around the backside. If you ask a firefighter, what music would you like at a service or a ceremony, they would say a bagpipe. If you asked the law enforcement at a fallen officer's event, what music would you like, they would tell you a bagpipe. 9/11, 11/11. We have done six events at the park since Dedicated, and Robert has been there for all six events playing his bagpipe. The two that he couldn't be, the other two, he was out of town. So, Robert, from the Friends in Memorial Lane, we have a special thing that's made just for us, and it's Memorial Lane. I don't know if y'all can see it. It's the silhouette of Memorial Lane with a flag, but we had her add a bagpiper. So, it shows you walking through Memorial Lane playing your bagpipe. And on the flag, it says, "Robert Silvestri." So, from the Friends in Memorial Lane and the community, we thank you for walking your bagpipes through Memorial Lane. Thank you.
Our next presentation is also a presentation of a couple...a couple of folks that also help us on...in this time, they've been down at the Memorial Lane, they've been to Veterans' Day, they've performed several events for us. And once again, they do this because they like to do it, they give this back to the city. These young...these young gentlemen is Adam Stone and Wesley Barefoot. I think they're out here. Adam, Wesley, come on up here. And Ace is here with them. Ace Maddox. He's got a little presentation also, and I'm gonna go ahead and read the certificates. But here again, we really appreciate the things that you do. They play their trumpets, both of them, both trumpets, right? Or bugles?
Yeah.
Bugles. There you go. And they're always out there where you can't see them, because you know, we hear it from the distance. They do a great job for us, and they perform several times for the city. Once again, they do this because they wanna do it for the community, they wanna do it because they enjoy doing it, and they enjoy giving to the community. So, this is our opportunity to recognize them for what they've done for the community. And as you can see, they're both involved in Scouts, and they're working really hard to get that Eagle Badge, I think. And so, we look forward to seeing them doing that also, and the things that they do for the community. So, we wanna thank you for what you do for the community and hope to continue to hear your music out there in the background, okay? This was for Wesley Barefoot. The certificate of recognition is a certified award to Wesley Barefoot, the Boy Scout Troop 360, Granbury High School Band, in honor of his dedicated participation in patriotic celebrations in Granbury, Texas, signed by myself, Ninhua, the mayor of the city of Granbury. And we also have a certificate of recognition and certificate as an award to Adam Stone, Boy Scout Troop 360, once again, Granbury High School Band, Granbury High School Choir, in honor of his dedicated participation in patriotic celebrations in Granbury, Texas, signed by myself, Ninhua, the mayor of Granbury. So, once again, we wanna congratulate you guys both for what you do for the community. Congratulations. I think maybe they have a little presentation here. Yeah.
Be over here.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ace Maddox. I hope you may know me. I'm the commander of American Legion Post 278. I had a good friend of mine, Julie Pennell. Pennell gave me a couple of hero shirts to give to these two young men, and they are...I call them men, whether you think they are or not. They have called...they have been there for us, for the community, and especially for me if I need them to come and play taps. They also played taps when we put out the flags on Saturday before Memorial Day. They'd play taps when we get done putting the flags out. And this is...the taps are blown over the cemetery. So, it's a great honor and privilege for me to get this certificate and stuff done for these two gentlemen. And I think, Adam, your father's here? Wesley, is your parents? Would you...would y'all come up front here and get some pictures with your kids? I don't care how you look. I just wanted to get these parents up here for them to be honored also that their kids do such a great job for the community. Thank you both.
Ace is right on, because we've used Wesley and Adam quite a bit, and there's been some times when the weather wasn't really...you know, they stood out there in some cold weather, some rainy weather, and they participated for us a lot. So, we do appreciate what they do for our events and stuff out there. Our next presentation is gonna be to honor our Granbury Optimist Club. I think we've got some Optimist members. If I could get all the Optimist members to come forward. Come on, don't be shy. Mr. Mobley? You're gonna...if you're not aware of what the Optimist Club does or who they are, you're gonna find out tonight, because the Optimist Club in Granbury has been active now for 50 years. The Optimist Club started about 100 years ago, actually '99, I believe it was. So, they've been...this group in Granbury's been active half of that time. And I don't think we have any originals right here, do we? We ask about that, and I don't think we had any. But the Optimist Club is a civic group, along with all the other civic groups that are around town. But the Optimist Club does so many things for the youth of Hood County. Whenever they do something, they're looking to do something for the youth, whether it be a park, whether it be a fundraiser to help them. And the scholarship program that they do is just phenomenal. They raise money, and they give out to Mark and Bill, how many? Twenty-some scholarships, is it, every year? And these are...these are kickstarters for all the folks that are wanting to go to college, and they apply for them, and then we present them to all the kiddos coming out of school. So, and yes, I'm an Optimist member myself. If you're interested in joining the Optimist Club, they meet at 6:30 on Tuesday morning. How many people are very interested in that? I don't think so. But they have a gourmet breakfast, so it's a good way to get your kickstart. I use Tuesday as getting a kickstart, and I have a full day on Tuesday. So, if you wanna find...if you wanna get ahold of me on Tuesday, I'm usually available, because I get up at 6:30 in the morning, and I just make a full day of it. And I'm gonna read what the Optimist International sent down to the Optimist Club in recognizing them for their service in Granbury. I'm not gonna keep you guys up here very long. I know you're in a meeting right now, so, okay. This letter was from the Optimist International dated...it's dated from March the 31st, so that's when there will officially be the 50 years, I guess. And it says, "To the members of the Optimist Club of Granbury, Texas, congratulations and thank you for 50 years of service to your community and most specifically to the youth of Granbury. Since March 31st, 1970, you have been constant presence in the lives of the fine people in Granbury. In thousands of ways, both remembered and life-changing, you have touched the hearts of people, young and not-so-young. You have had a greater impact than you will ever know with all of your programs. Through all of these years, you have provided hope and positive vision, and in doing so, you have continually brought out the best in the youth. As you gather to celebrate this significant milestone, I am sure that you will share laughter as well as some tears as you remember all that has occurred these past 50 years. It is good to remember where we come from. After you look back, do not forget...do not forget to look ahead," and they do a lot of that. "Use the experiences of the past 50 years as a firm foundation for the next 50 years. The needs of your youth and our community may have changed, but they are ever...but they're forever present. So, continue. Continue to make a positive impact on your community. Your optimism is needed now more than ever. So, celebrate and share your joy. Know that you are appreciated for all that you do, and you are the best, and I am proud to be associated with you. Sincerely, the Governor Mary Lou Curry of Optimist International." So, that's...give them a big hand. So, that comes with a proclamation, and this time, I'd like to read the proclamation for the contribute to the 50 years of Optimist service. Whereas the strength and vitality of the Optimist Club of Granbury, Texas, community depends upon the efforts and dedication of the volunteers, and whereas Optimist Club worldwide reach and serve as a friend of the youth to more than 6 million children each year through youth-oriented service projects, and whereas the mission of Optimist Club is to provide hope and positive vision to bring out the best in the youth, thereby contributing to the betterment of the communities. Therefore, the Granbury Texan Optimist Club is recognized and honored for its 50 years of dedicated service to its community and the children, and is encouraged to serve for many, many more years. Signed by Adrian Elcock, 2019-20, Optimist International president. Congratulations, folks. At this time, I would like to have Billy Wimmerly, the president of the Optimist Club. If you have not heard the creed, I'm gonna let Billy recite the creed and listen to this creed and think about going forward every day. And if you just take a little bit of this and execute it, it's really...it's really good...it's really something that, you know, it's common sense. It really is. So, Billy? Now, he's gonna read it, I think.
Public math and public speaking are not my forte. Optimist creed: Promise yourself to be so strong that nothing can disturb your peace of mind; to talk health, happiness, and prosperity to every person you meet; to make all your friends feel that there's something in them; to look at the sunny side of everything and make your optimism come true; to think only of the best; to work only for the best; and expect only the best; to be just enthusiastic about success of others as you are about your own; to forbid...forget the mistakes of the past and press on to greater achievements of the future; to wear cheerful countenance at all times and give every living creature you meet a smile; to give so much time to the improvement of yourself that you have no time to criticize others; to be too large for worry, too noble for anger, too strong for fear, and too happy to grip the presence of trouble. Thank you.
You know, when we do that every day after the meeting, you know, we get to...we get to stand up there with each other, and then we look off in different directions so we can try to memorize that whole thing. And I'm still working on it. I'm still working on it. But it's...it means a lot. I do wanna remind you, is that this Thursday? I think Julie's gonna make an announcement here.
I forgot.
You forgot?
So excited. This Thursday evening, Robert, one of the things he does is play, and they play competitively. And he needs to raise his own money, and I can say this, he wouldn't ask other people. But Thursday night from 5:00 to 8:00 at Divine Wine, there's gonna be a fundraiser to help Robert do that for competition. But the street's gonna be closed off, and from 5:00 to 8:00, and there's gonna be bagpipers playing. So, if you wanna hear bagpipers play...
A whole bunch of them.
A whole bunch of them. And one's from Scot...one's from Scotland, right? Ireland, sorry. It's from Ireland. So, come, have a glass of wine, help raise funds for Robert, but hear those bagpipers, and you'll enjoy it. 5:00 to 8:00, Divine Wine, Thursday night.
Thank you, Julie.
Sorry.
You know, it's such an honor to recognize the people that serve this community, this great community, and all the things that they do to make all the things that we do happen out there. And so, you know, it's good that we're able to do that. There's a lot more that we...I wish we could do for those folks, but it's...we have them all the time that serve like that. So, once again, we wanna applaud them and thank them for what they do for the community. Next, we're gonna move into our public comments on the agenda items for the non-public hearing agenda items, and I don't think we have any public hearings. So, speakers have a time limit of three minutes allotted for this time to comment on regular agenda items that are not listed as public hearings. So, at this time, I open it up to the public. Does anybody in the public wish to talk on any of the agenda items that are on the agenda today? Hearing none? I'll close the public comments section. Next, we'll move into our consent agenda. Council, we have...we got four items on the consent agenda. First item being consider approving City Council meeting minutes of February 4, 2020, regular meeting. Second one being received, the 2019 Racial Profile Report, which we do that every year. The third one being consider adopting Resolution Number 2003, authorizing participation with U.S. Fixed Income Trust Investment Pool Designated Authorization and Representation. And the number four is consider approving the First Amendment for Relocation Agreement with the Brazile Electric that would allow Brazile to retain ownership of the former Friendship Substation Site and Facility used for a training facility. Council, you've had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to make changes to or to pull off at this time?
Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Agenda number three and agenda number four.
Okay, you wish to pull them off?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion poll item...or we have a request, poll item number three and item number four off for discussion. Council, any more...any more items that you'd like to discuss or to change? So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve items number one, two of the consent agenda.
So moved.
And I have that motion, Councilman Oregon.
Second.
And a second by...
Me.
Wadley. Councilman Wadley. He likes to play games with me. I know. So, council, any more discussion on items number one and two of the consent agenda? Hearing none? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say nay. Say it loud.
Consent agenda is now approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, it is my pleasure to read the certificate to our honorary council member, Beckett Rowe. It says, "The distinction of the honorary council member is presented to Beckett Rowe, Acton Elementary Student Council President, on this 18th day of February 2020, in recognition of academic excellence, leadership, and presenting the qualities of an excellent council member, signed by Dr. Jeremy Glenn, Granbury ISD Superintendent, and myself, Ninhua, the mayor of Granbury." And we also, on the back of this certificate...on the back of this certificate, there is also another certificate that reads something like this, and this is something that you can take anytime you do a resume or you go out to get a job, and you can keep this for forever. It says, "Congratulations on being chosen to serve as an honorary council member with the Granbury City Council. Keep this certificate for your records, and as you apply to colleges or for scholarships in the future, be sure to list this as one of your achievements. Your service to Granbury ISD and as a student leader on your campus is very appreciated. We wish you the best of luck on a bright future, signed Dr. Jeremy Glenn of Granbury ISD and myself, Ninhua, the mayor of Granbury." And with that, we'd like to give you this certificate and also an honorary city pin. And now for the big thing. We get to get a photo with all the council, okay? And now for the big thing, we get to get a photo with all the council, okay? Hold that, there you go. See, there your mom brought her camera. All right, and if I could get my mayor pro tem, Mr. Tony Mobley, he'll escort you back down to your parents. Thank you. At this time, we'll move into deliberation agenda, we'll move the two items that were pulled off the consent agenda as number one and two on the deliberation agenda, that first one being number three, consider adopting resolution number 2003, authorizing participation of the U.S. Fixed Income Trust Investment Pool, and designate authorized representatives. And that was pulled off by Councilmember Eddie Rodriguez, and I'm going to call upon Chris Kaufman, if you could give an explanation on that, if you would, please.
You bet. Thank you, Counsel. This is an opportunity to utilize yet another pooled governmental fund, which will allow us to deposit the money that we're going to be receiving towards the end of this month into that pool, it would earn us more interest than the other pool cash accounts that we have. Ava Gregory has been working on this, and I would defer to her to come and fill in and answer any questions we may have, but the bottom line is, this is a, a cash pool that's made available with AAA bond rating that's approved by law that we can invest our money, and we park our money there. It's available overnight, the next day if we need it, but it does draw an interest rate that's, that's higher than what we can earn in the local banks that are collateralized or through these other pools. So Ava, you want to add anything to that? And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, good evening. Mr. Manager, I think you've covered most of the highlights that I have on the agenda item. As you said, we are trying to diversify, and we have a lot of our investment with Texas Class, which has been earning the most yield for the city, but we have identified the U.S. Fixed Income Trust, it's been highly recommended and used by other cities, and it's earning about 10 basis points more than Texas Class. And again, we don't want to keep all of our funds in one of the, one pools. I believe Mr. Kaufman has sent out the quarterly investment report last week, so you have, if you had the opportunity to see our investments, and currently we have three pools, Texas Pool, Texas Star, and Texas Class. Most of our funds are in Texas Class, and we just want to recommend to open up another pool to allow us to diversify and pick up a little bit more yield. If there's any other questions I can answer, please let me know.
Thank you, Ava, thank you, Chris. Counsel, do you have any questions for Ava or Chris, Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. Ava, do, do we have, I know we're trying to diversify our funds and everything, is there a goal or objective of how many funds that we want to diversify in or put our money into, how many portfolios? I know we're going, this is our fourth one, and if it's the highest yield, why not, I mean, do we want to go more than four, or do we want, is there optimum number? Can you answer that first?
Sure. I, I felt like three or four would be optimal, to have that option for the city to continue monitoring the yields in all of the pools. They are competing with each other. Like, right now, U.S. Fixed Income Trust will not be charging us any fees, and they are not even planning on charging fees, and they are competing with the other funds, so they're offering more yield. So we have the opportunity to, to really observe and pay attention to these funds, and as you know, on $20 million, the interest rate, 1.8% interest rate, will make a big difference, even with 10 basis points. So we are trying to make sure that the city's funds are secure, the net asset value is constant for all these funds, it's a dollar, it's secure, yet we can access it overnight.
Or like the other three, would you say that maybe we could roll in the lowest yield one into this new one? I don't know, I mean, and just have three, or what's, what's your thought of that, of doing that?
Let me answer that. What we do is we monitor to where we can make the most money, and we invest the money there. Now, we don't put it all into one fund, but we don't have a lot of money in the lowest performing pool right now, which would be, I think, Texas Pool, if my memory serves me correct, but forever, Texas Pool was the, was the darling angel of the state, but right now, it's not, for whatever reason, so they're not paying as much interest. So we, we have the flexibility to move it from pool to pool as we need to, to make y'all the most interest that we can. And so it's like this, if we have, if, if you're taking it on the home level, so if you're wanting to have a CD, you're going to go to the bank where you can get the best interest rate.
Right.
And that's what we're doing with the city's funds as well, but we're not putting it in CDs, we're putting it in these pool cash accounts.
Is there any other ones that are just as comparable with U.S. Fixed Income?
I would say Texas Class is, and we already have $20 million in Texas Class, so most of our funds are in Texas Class. The other funds that we have received from Texas Water Development Board are escrow account with BOK, and they have to stay at that bank. We had the opportunity to invest in treasuries, so we are picking up yields there, but we didn't have an option to decide which investment firm the funds would be invested with. As Mr. Kaufman said, Texas Pool and Texas Star were one of the core accounts the city had forever. Closing them is not something I would recommend. In case their yields picks up, we would have to come back and sign a resolution to get an account opened, but we minimize our investments with those firms or pools.
Is there a minimum amount that we have to keep in those accounts in order to stay open?
Not really.
Okay.
I might also add that we also monitor the credit rating of each one of these pools, and if they, if they fall below a AAA rating, we will not put money in there. We, we maintain the highest standards as far as that goes. That's the most protection you can get is the AAA credit rating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any more questions for staff or Ava?
Good questions.
Yes. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 2003 as presented.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And second by Councilman Corrigan. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next consent, our next deliberation agenda will be consent item number four, which is consider approving the First Amendment to Relocation Agreement with the Brazos Electric. I'm going to call upon Chris Kaufman once again to give us the staff report on that item, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. Some of you all may recall the airport project that began in, as early as 2016 officially. We're moving forward with that, we've successfully completed what we call Phase One, and that's the relocation of all the power lines, that's the transmission lines, the distribution lines, electric distribution lines, and the substation. We did most of that work on the, on everything that Brazos Electric owns, we contracted directly with them in a prior agreement, and that's what we're talking about amending today. And that prior agreement, or the current agreement, I should call it, we have the opportunity to receive the piece of property where the current, or the retired substation is located. So what's happened is, a couple of good things have happened. The relocation and the construction of the new substation fell under budget from about, by about $971,000. So that's, that's good news. Also, Brazos would like to keep that old substation and use it for a training facility. They've offered us $277,812 for it, and they're doing that based on a book value for the substation and, and keeping it on their books that way. I did receive a check, or the city received a check from them today in the event that we move forward to amend this agreement, so we have the consideration in hand, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
What was that amount equation to?
$277,812 is the, what they're willing to pay us for the substation that's sitting there with the old equipment. If we keep that substation, it's in our current agreement, that they go in and tear it out and salvage everything they can out of it, and, and we have to pay for that demolition, which would be about $120,000 to $150,000.
Four hundred thousand dollar swing.
Yes, it's, it's, it's very, yeah, if you were to receive the property and then turn around and try to sell it, it's... Pat, do you know how many acres that old substation is?
Come on, come on up to the mic here, Pat.
I believe it's about an acre to an acre and a quarter, but I could be wrong.
It's, it's, it's close to that, but I don't know the number off the top of my head.
Okay.
I can find that out.
So, anyway, it's a long 377, and that's kind of where we're at. Now, in all, in all justice, the adjacent property owner to the south of the substation has visited with me probably a year ago with interest in buying that piece of land, but in all reality, I don't think we can get $277,000 from someone whenever we're dealing with the co-op, so the value's there for the city to seize the moment and amend the agreement.
What was our intent if we did keep it?
We were going to sell it. We just felt like, they said, well, we didn't want to leave it with them, you know, we're sitting there in the negotiation table in Waco, and they said, okay, so, so, okay, we're going to provide you this new location for your new substation, do we get the old one? You know, and do we get that land? And they said, well, sure, we don't need it.
Do we train our people also in our electric company?
We don't run substations.
We don't run substions?
We do buy the transformers for them, but we don't, if we needed to, they would let us do that.
Right.
But typically, our guys operate on the side of their substation.
Counselman Rodriguez?
I think, when I initially read this, I think my confusion is why build a new one if you're going to keep the old one? That was my initial confusion on this one, and, and I, I just needed some more background information that the, the, what was it, transmission lines? Is that what you're calling them?
Yes, sir.
The transmission lines had to be relocated because of the airport project, and that's basically with any major project, whether it's dealing with transportation, you have to deal with the utilities prior to commencing the actual construction of the, either a road or an airport, so that was my confusion. So it cleared it up why the, the new substation was built. Transmissions are relocated, they're out of the way, there's nothing that is powered on, from my, from what I've been told, at the old substation, and I think it's a great opportunity for the city not only to get reimbursed for its, for the land, but also provide a training ground for the Brazos Electric.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
So Pat, I'm glad you're here, so, and just briefly, so one of the big pushbacks on the airport project initially was, we're going to have all this equity, the grant is for this much, the funds will do this much, but if we're saving this much on the front end, one of the drawbacks was there's no, there's no taxiway, they basically have to reverse taxi on the runway, which can be a problem. Is there a way to incorporate a taxiway going forward, so looking, looking ahead, maybe we can do all of this at the same time?
Currently, the EOPCs are the engineers' opinion of probable cost, and the balance of funds that Granbury has and those funds to be committed by Texas Dot, which is another 9.1 million, will put us on the positive side of building a taxiway. We would certainly like to do that. The bid openings are on April the 16th, we'll have a, a better idea then financially of where this project is, but right now it looks positive, but...
We'll touch you down for a yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Counsel, any more questions for staff or Pat?
Mayor. Now, Chris, will this money go into which fund will we go into?
It'll stay in the airport fund.
Airport fund, okay.
Because those were construction dollars that we took out of the airport fund, which makes sense that they would go back in.
Yeah.
Since we never really took possession of the property, it's, it's really just kind of like a rebate, is what it's going to be, because we never transferred the deed to the city, we're waiting for this decision tonight whether we should transfer the deed or not, so...
So you already got the check, huh?
Got the check.
I'm going to go ahead and cash it tomorrow.
The consideration has been made.
All right. Good, good stuff. Counsel, any more questions, concerned about it? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approving the First Amendment to Relocation Agreement with the Brazos Electric that would allow the Brazos Electric to retain ownership of the former Friendship Substation Site Facility used as for a training facility.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Councilman Reiner, and...
Second.
Second by Councilman Wadley. I can always tell when it's you. Any more discussion, Counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Moving on into the deliberation agenda, item number five is to consider approving the 2020 Granbury Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan as presented by the half association. I'm going to turn this over to Chris Kaufman with the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, a ten-year document that we're considering tonight, and Aaron and, and team will share with you how we got to where we are tonight, but the important thing I would just want to say is if there's anything in this presentation that, you know, causes you pause, or makes you think that maybe we should investigate that more, slow, slow us down, and let's address those, it may get to the point where you need to send it back to the, to the Parks Committee and let them work on it and then bring it back, but we feel like that staff and the consultant gone through the collaborative, collaborative project that we have, that we've got something here that you're going to like. So I'll turn it over to Aaron at this time, and he's got some, some details that he'll share with us.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel, Mr. Manager. So the Parks Master Plan require updating about every 10 years, and our current plan is 10 years old this year. And this master plan will play an important role in the planning and development of the Granbury Park system. Parks Master Plans also weigh heavily on the scoring of grants the city may apply for to help fund future projects. At the June 18th meeting, Counsel voted unanimously in favor of approving the agreement and scope of work from half associates to update the city of Granbury's Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan. Since then, there have been several meetings with city staff, a steering committee was formed consisting of Councilman Corrigan and Councilman Wadley, Parks Board members Joan Snyder and James Dickens, representatives from local youth sport organizations, the county, Brazos River Authority, to name a few. There were two public meetings held here in this room to gather input from the public. There was also a telephone survey and online survey conducted to also get input. At our February 10th Parks Board meeting, the Parks Board voted unanimously in favor of recommending that this master plan, as presented to them by half and associates, go before Counsel tonight to be considered for approval and adoption. You have available to you 133-page document, we're not going to go through all of that.
Oh, come on.
We realize that, and I apologize. But we do, we do have half associates here, Kendall is going to kind of summarize and hit on some important findings and recommendations, and like Mr. Kaufman said, we'd be glad to answer any questions, so hand it over to Kendall.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and City Council, thank you for the opportunity to be here. So like Aaron mentioned, this has been about an eight-month process, so we wanted to give Counsel an update on the process and then highlight some of the recommendations and implementation items that have come out of this master plan process. So this, this master plan will identify park and recreation needs both today and in the future, and like Aaron mentioned, it's very important to set the stage for future park development and expansion of the existing system. So, this slide shows the process that we went through, uh, to develop the master plan, and overall, it took about eight months, so we're here towards the end of the process. And I wanted to just touch on, um, our, our add to Aaron's summary of the public engagement efforts, um, so in addition to the steering committee, we also, uh, briefed, uh, City Council and the Parks Board, we also had several discussions with staff, uh, department heads and stakeholder-focused groups to see what, uh, their needs and desires are for the future of parks and recreation, and then I'll touch on a few of the key findings from the survey and open house, uh, so, between the telephone and online survey, there were about, uh, just about almost five hundred, uh, responses, and then across the two public meetings that we had, there were about eighty attendees. So, some of the key findings from the surveys, uh, some of the prioritized facilities were playgrounds, uh, multi-use trails, and, uh, family picnic areas were some of the top amenities, and then at the first public meeting held last fall, um, if you've attended, it was very lively, um, and we had four stations dedicated to, um, what folks want to see at, uh, parks and open space and natural areas for sports and athletic fields, and then also for indoor recreation and aquatics, so those are some of the top amenities that folks prioritized for those, uh, facilities. We also went through and inventoried the existing system, so, um, what is on the ground today, and then we went through an extensive, uh, needs assessment process to determine, um, what is the current level of service, uh, for, for Granbury residents today, and, and those large bubbles there represent the general service area of the existing parks in Granbury. And so, the bottom line is, uh, with the expected population growth that Granbury is anticipated, um, to receive, uh, as, as that growth occurs, if there are no more parks dedicated or developed, um, there will be deficit in, uh, parkland for, uh, neighborhood parks, community parks, and, um, the entire park system. Uh, and, and something that came up quite a bit during this process was, um, you know, we just looked at the parks and population numbers for the City of Granbury, but in reality, the city actually does service the larger county, um, which is about sixty thousand residents, uh, since there are no parks and recreation facilities, uh, within the county, um, so if we do consider that larger county population, um, those level of service deficits, um, become even larger, especially as the county and the city continue to grow. So, now I'm going to touch on the recommendation highlights, so, um, like Aaron mentioned, I'm sure all of you have read the a hundred and thirty-three, uh, page document, um, but I'm just gonna kind of hit on the, the highlights here, so this represents, um, the outline of the plan, so it's six chapters in total. Um, and the overall vision, so this was developed through the stakeholder, um, and public engagement, um, and represents a lot of what we heard during this process, is to really maintain the community character and celebrate that through the park system, and also to leverage opportunities for recreational tourism, uh, through, through sports tournaments, and then also, uh, maintain the quality of life, so, um, parks are, um, are not just a quality of life item, but also seen as a necessity, and oftentimes, a quality park system is the reason that, uh, a resident may choose to move to a new community or new neighborhood, or the reason why, um, a business may relocate to a, a specific area. So, the plan is, uh, organized into six overarching goals, so these goals are focused on, uh, park accessibility, park design and maintenance, system connectivity, community character, recreation tourism, and then partnerships, so under each of these main goals are a series of objectives and, uh, specific actions for the city to carry out over time. Um, these next series of maps represent the overall, uh, recommendations, so looking at where there are underserved areas, uh, within the city today, uh, looking at opportunities to potentially partner with the school district for, uh, shared use of, of facilities at certain times, uh, also looking at, uh, capitalizing on some of the, the rich amenities in Granbury, like the lake, um, and, and looking at additional, uh, lake access points for special purpose parks. Additionally, uh, in the, the core part of the city, looking at some strategic areas for additional, uh, pocket parks to serve as small areas of, of green space within the community, looking towards the future at, uh, where recent or new development is going, um, ensuring that land is, is, is dedicated, uh, for parkland in those areas to serve new residents. And then some of the low-hanging fruit that we see, uh, there are some existing parkland areas within the city that don't have any amenities currently, um, so that includes, uh, Lambert Branch Park, so looking at, um, making that a priority to develop those currently undeveloped parks, um, and then looking at, um, some, uh, recently acquired, uh, city land to develop future parks within the community. And we also looked at a high level at some, uh, potential trail opportunities, so looking at ways to, uh, leverage the moments in time hike and bike trail amenity and extend that further throughout the city as development occurs. So, now I'm gonna just briefly touch on some of the more specifics of each of those main goals, so, uh, park, goal one is park accessibility, so some of the actions related to this goal relate to strategic land acquisition and meeting those parkland level of service targets, uh, looking at developing parklands and, uh, continuing to pursue funding for developing park amenities, and then I'll touch on a little bit later, uh, the parkland dedication ordinance, so looking at opportunities to, um, strengthen that existing ordinance, uh, to, uh, to really account for the true cost of both acquiring and developing parks. Goal two is focused on park design and maintenance, so these actions relate to improving the existing amenities within parks, so looking at things like, uh, wayfinding signage to make, uh, residents aware of all the great amenities that are existing in the, the city parks, uh, also looking at improvements to the Decker Gym Facility, and then as part of this process, we also had a recreation architect, uh, do an assessment of the existing swim center, so he has some very detailed recommendations on some improvements that could be made over time to the swim center. And then there are also recommendations related to, uh, facility maintenance, so, um, just ensuring that as the, the number of acreage that the department maintains grows, that, um, the, the staffing that is, um, available to, to maintain those acres increases as well. Goal three is focused on system connectivity, so, uh, looking at planning for future trails and bikeways, uh, just like parks, this is a, um, an amenity that is, um, being, we've seen kind of explode in the past few decades, especially in the metroplex, uh, residents are starting to expect, um, uh, trail and bikeway connectivity, um, so looking at, uh, planning for that through a Trails and Bikeways Master Plan, and then continuing to look for, uh, funding opportunities for, for trail improvements. Goal four is focused on, uh, maintaining community character, so looking at, uh, incorporating history and culture, uh, through, through arts and parks and programming, uh, preserving the natural landscape, uh, within Granbury, so, uh, I always want to mention that not every park has to be, um, an active park with sports fields or playgrounds, there could be, uh, more of a passive or natural park where folks can just go and enjoy nature, so we want to incorporate those as well, um, and then looking at ways to improve the overall public awareness of, of the existing facilities. Goal five is focused on recreational tourism, so again, leveraging those existing assets within the community, so looking at, uh, updating and expanding sports fields, um, and then to try to attract some of those more regional tournaments that can have a positive impact on economic development for the community, looking at adding some long-term, uh, recreation destinations, uh, continuing to use parks for events, and then looking at opportunities to add, uh, water access points, uh, throughout the city. And then the final goal is focused on partnerships, so, like Aaron mentioned, we did have a representative from the BRA and Hood County on the steering committee, so, um, they are aware of this process, and, um, they've, they've been involved in some of these discussions, but looking at, um, continuing to partner with those entities, uh, to look at opportunities to partner, uh, for parks and recreation in the future. So, I mentioned that I would get into a little bit more detail about the parkland dedication ordinance, um, so I just wanted to spend a couple minutes on this, so, as part of the previous master plan, uh, done in two thousand and ten, it did look at a high level, what are, uh, some of the recommendations that could be made to strengthen this ordinance, um, so we did a similar sort of high-level assessment of the existing ordinance, uh, Granbury, Granbury's current parkland dedication ordinance is located within the, uh, in section four point one-two of the subdivision ordinance, um, so typical parkland dedication ordinances are made up of a land dedication requirement, um, or an INLU fee, um, and those are intended to cover the cost of acquiring land for a park, and then some ordinances also have a park development fee, which is intended to cover the cost of developing land as a park, so when a developer comes in, um, this dedic, parkland dedication ordinance is in place to ensure that, uh, public, um, park facilities are incorporated, uh, with that new development. So, I mentioned that we're doing a similar, uh, review as the twenty-ten plan did, and so we looked at calculations, um, based on standard practices for, um, what the updated land dedication, INLU fee, and park development fee might be, um, so we do incorporate some of those recommendations into the master plan, but I just want to reiterate that, um, these potential adjustments, uh, to the ordinances that are, that's documented in the master plan, um, e, even if the master plan is approved tonight, it would not change the ordinance that would require, um, additional discussions, and staff would come back with, with more discussion, um, with, with this body, um, at a, at a later date. So, just in brief, the current requirements, uh, in terms of land dedication, uh, the current ordinance requires one acre for every seventy-five dwelling units, um, or five hundred and twenty-five dollars per dwelling unit, and then there, in terms of a park development fee, um, if the land is dedicated, then that fee is determined based on park development plan, um, and if the developer chooses, um, or goes with the INLU fee option, then that fee is not, um, not levied, so, based on the calculations, these are, um, some potential adjustments to those, uh, requirements, which again, uh, staff will, will come back at a later date, um, to, to, uh, present some options to you, but we just wanted to, to make sure that you were, um, that you were briefed on this, since it is included as part of the recommendations in the master plan. All right, last section here is focused on the implementation plan, so, all of the actions that I highlighted earlier, um, they are included in the Implementation Action Plan, which is really meant to serve as kind of a checklist for, uh, the city moving forward, so this slide lists the different types of actions, uh, from investments to operations, policies, regulations, and then additional studies, and then each action is also assigned a timeframe based on their relative priority, and then in the action plan, we also look at who are the potential partners that could help, um, implement those actions. So, this slide is just an example of, um, one of the many in, implementation action tables that's found in the document. Aaron mentioned, um, having a master plan updated is, uh, is important for Texas Parks and Wildlife, uh, funding, so, as part of their, uh, grant funding process, they look to see what communities indicate as their high priority needs list from their master plans, um, so we've split this up into high priority needs for outdoor facilities, indoor facilities, and policy type of needs, um, and if you notice, they are kind of broad, um, and that is intentional, so when the city does go for future Texas Parks and Wildlife funding, um, it's more likely that your specific project will fall within this high priority needs list. And then with that, um, we, we have had several meetings, um, just within the past few weeks, we had our final steering committee back at the end of January, um, we had a public meeting, uh, beginning of February to present the draft recommendations, and then we met with park board last week, um, so with that, I would be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions for staff or? Aaron, you still there?
Still here, yes, sir.
How do you feel about this, uh, all the work we've done, and I, I know we've done a little bit different, but, uh, do you have a good feeling for the whole thing, or?
It, well, I'll admit it's overwhelming at, at our needs, you know, um, I look at, back at what we've done in my seventeen years here, um, and, and some days you look back and say, well, we haven't added a lot, but we've, I think we've maintained what we have to a high standard, but, uh, looking at the way we've grown, um, and I can specifically speak to baseball fields, um, how that has evolved, uh, you know, when I first started, give you an example, when I first started, well, we would maintain properties all day long, and then two guys would run out and get all the ballfields ready in an hour or or two. Well, now, we've got guys that work nearly all day prepping those fields, and it still doesn't satisfy people, you know, so that's just gives you an idea of what people expect with their facilities nowadays, um, so, but I, I do feel good about all the, the data we've collected, um, compared to other cities, um, I feel that we can take this plan and, and move forward and make good, solid recommendations to council during budget time, um, that's really what I'm looking forward to, is, is using it to assist in what, what it says we may need to look for, um, to develop and expand upon and improve upon also.
And that's quite what I was looking for, it's, so it, it's doable, and you feel real comfortable about presenting this at a budget time, when, you know, you're, you're, you're underneath the fire to, to cut the budget or, or add things and stuff, and the things that really mean, and really things that we need to be doing.
All we need is money in fifteen or twenty years.
Well, and you know yourself, Aaron, that there's a lot of times when you get, uh, and I've said this myself, there's a lot of times we get funding and stuff through not only our budget, but also through the community and, and the community assistance, and I think a lot of this is, some of the, the meetings I went to, it's, it's an involvement with the community too, because there's opportunities there for community civic groups, to raise their hands, say, hey, I want to help out on this little project and things like that, so I think it leads, it leads a lot of that to, to where people can, uh, identify that some things that they want to help out with in the community, get some community involved.
And I might add, HAF is great to work with, again, you know, we got the pleasure of ten years ago to work with them, and, uh, I don't regret the decision that we made.
Council, you got any questions for, uh, staff or Eric or?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Wadley, come on.
I would like to say first, thanks to HAF and associates for what, the work they did, um, I really enjoyed this process. I have read all these pages, I, I was involved in a lot of them, but I've, but I've, I've read the whole thing, it's, it's way.
Are you bragging?
No, no, I'm not, she, she said no one read it, but I have, anyway, it.
We're just proud you can read.
Yeah, we are. Well, I've read the first three pages in it.
Lot, lot of pictures.
Anyway, um, it, it's really inclusive, there's an awful lot in here, um, I would invite the council real quick to look at page sixteen on the report near the top, the, the page number's top left corner. It's kind of a red section.
Okay.
Anyway, it has the record of accomplishments since twenty-ten, so it's based on the last one, and on that one, there were twenty-two recommendations, and thirteen remain unchanged, and, you know, like Aaron said, we've done a good job of maintaining what we have, but, but there, in the, in the past, hasn't been a lot of maybe emphasis on, on expanding this, um, she pointed out the, the section that right now we have more acres than we need based on today's population, but in twenty forty-five, we're gonna be way under, and if we wait till twenty forty-five to say we need to, uh, obtain parkland, it won't happen, because development will happen in the, in the meantime, um, I actually talked to a commissioner earlier this week about, you know, do they, does the county own land and they don't, but, but, you know, right now, the city's doing all the parkland for the entire county, and, and it'd be nice if maybe the, the county commissioners could be involved in this also, a lot of what we discussed in these meetings, we're, we're having partnerships, you know, the, the schools could, could participate, the walking trail that we're talking and doing about around, uh, the middle school, Acton, not Acton, but. about around the middle school, Acton, not Acton, but.
Acton, directed.
Acton, yeah, AMS. You know, that, that would be a joint thing. It, it's not all things that we would have to fund, but, you know, parks really, my eyes were really open during this process, I guess. I, I haven't thought about ball fields because I don't have kids that are that age. And, and our, you know, the bathrooms facility that we have at our city park is not great. Our, our ball fields are way inadequate. I talked to the, the lady under Aaron that schedules all the tournaments and things. We don't have what they need. They all ask for RV parking. We don't have that. We don't even have adequate parking over there anyway. Just park up and down the street, pretty much. There's just an awful lot here. I invite everyone to review it. I hope the community can kind of look over this also. And, and, you know, we don't do it all tomorrow, but, but a lot of the recommendations involve research, study, and those could all start tomorrow. Again, not all at once, because, but, but I mean, a, a lot is, a lot can be done now. But if we don't start thinking about it now, it won't be there in the future when we want it.
Mr. Mayor.
Well said. Counsel, Mobley.
I'll dovetail what, what Mr. Wadley said is, I had a conversation with Dr. Glenn at the school district today, and he's actually excited about this plan because they can work with us and they want to work with us as far as implementing some, some walking trails and the like. I mean, he's talking about, you know, connecting the old GISD property with the, with the skate park and all that. So, so like I said, it's, it's nice to have that relationship where we can actually pool our resources and, and do something good for the community. So my hat's off to you guys for all the work you've put in. I know you've put in countless hours and everybody has an opinion, and you have to massage all those egos as well. Thanks for working with Bruce.
And I think that was the intent of this whole thing was to get, and I hope we can get some more involvement with what you talked about, the county and Bruce, you, you highlighted that a little bit. But, you know, that's, that's the intent of this whole thing is to get not only the, the city need, but the county, the schools, and anybody else out there that has a need for, you know, parks and stuff, HOAs, people like that, that have a, a need for something near their communities and stuff. So I think we did a good job of trying to get the community involved in it. I think as we go forward, we're going to continue to have some involvement with the community in this thing. So, good job. Counsel, any more? Thank you, Aaron. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
So here and none here, I'll entertain a motion then to. Bruce had me move my page here. Sorry.
Sure moved.
Yeah. So we entertain a motion to approve the 2020 Granbury Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan as presented.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Counsel Wadley and second by Counsel Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Add it approved. Look forward to it. Our next item is to, is a presentation of the comprehensive annual physical report audit of the City of Granbury Physical Year 2018-2019. Chris, I'm going to call upon you to get a staff report on that for it, please.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Ava. I just, before she gets up, y'all remember the other day we received an award for, for this for 17 years in a row? And I fully anticipated another award coming for this one as well. The finance team has done a great job working with the auditing team, and we're really excited about this positive audit, and things are in good shape. But I will let them share the details with you. I appreciate y'all coming, and Ava, take, take over.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
She's got a short presentation. There we go.
Okay. So I would like to give you a high level update of our financial audit. It was completed by, by our outside CPA firm, George Morgan and Sneed. Daniel Hungerford is actually here, CPA who can provide additional comments and answer any questions you might have. I hope you all received the actual book because I know it's hard reading. And I am actually very excited about the cover as well. And as you can see, in the back, we have the best history small town label of the book. Let me start out, and I actually cannot see that. I just want to add here that the annual audit was prepared for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2019. The report is provided to the council, to our citizens, to bondholders, or any other interested parties with anyone who is interested in our financial situation, our financial condition. Publishing the annual report is also a very important step that we have to complete each year. It's a mandatory reporting step that the financial report is sent out to various agencies and also uploaded to the Emma portal by March 30th. It is one of the most important things that we do each year, along with the budget, of course. On the first slide, I would like to give you summary of the revenue sources for the general fund. As you can see, the general fund, one of the major funds for the City of Granbury, have generated $15,980,837 last year in revenue. The largest portion of the revenue, of course, is sales tax, which is right over $9 million. It represents 57% of the total revenue source. The second largest portion is property tax. Property tax represents 19% of the total revenues for the general fund. It equates to just right under $3 million. The next large slice of the pie is the franchise fees and other taxes. It's right under $1.8 million, represents 11%, followed by licenses and permits and other revenues. This is just, I wanted to, you to have an idea about how the chart is sliced for the general fund. And now I would like to show you two of the major revenues for the general fund. One of them is the ad valorem property tax revenue. This slide represents the growth for the last six years. The Y-axis is, represents the fiscal years from fiscal year 2014 through 2019. As you can see, in fiscal year 2019, we reached just under $1.5 billion. It was an increase of 6%. The green line shows the general direction of the growth for the total valuation. And on the right side, you can see the tax rate. The orange line shows the trending of the tax rate, which has been very marginal, varying from 39.46 cents to 39.94 cents. Since fiscal year 2013, the property tax stayed under 40 cents. And I also want to add that since fiscal year 2012, the city has experienced increase in property valuation due to increased commercial and residential growth. So the total valuation increased about $80 million last year, which translates to about $268,000 for the general fund. In your book, on page 22, you can see that the city collected $5.9 million in property taxes. From that, 2 point, almost just right under $3 million goes to the general fund, and the remaining $2.9 million is used for paying the debt service. The next slide is our largest single revenue source for the general fund. The chart shows, again, a same comparison for the last six years. Again, you can see the increase that the city has experienced over the last several years. We have reached $9.1 million in fiscal year 2019, and that represents a 5% growth. The increased retail tax base, which makes up about 60% of the total sales tax base, is the main driver of the growth. And we also have a breakdown of the sales tax on page 105. For the utility fund, the revenue source consists of the electric revenue, water, and wastewater revenue, and other revenue. The total revenue is $22,986,922. The largest portion of the pie is the electric revenue, about 46%, followed by water revenue, 31%, and wastewater revenue, 14%. On this slide, I wanted to highlight as well the, each revenue source to give you an idea how much, how much it varied over the last six years and how it's trending. As you can tell, first thing I want to highlight that as of January 1st, 2018, we have secured a new power purchase agreement that allowed us to decrease our electric rate. That is the reason you are not really seeing an increase in revenue. So fiscal year 2019 was the first full year that we were able to, to have the lower power purchase agreement as well as the lower rate. So while we have grown, the revenue is just a little bit lower on this slide. On the next slide, we have a combination of the water and wastewater revenues. And here you can see the aggressive growth that both water and sewer has experienced over, over the last seven years, six years on this slide. Again, the growth in commercial and residential development have added a lot of new connections. We also have inputted a slight increase for both water and sewer rates the last several years as well. But the increase in, for water and sewer combined was 4% last year and the year before, about 12%. We have added about 150 new water connections during the last fiscal year. And the last chart, and what I wanted to highlight here, one of the most important things that we have and the rating agencies do look at is our fund balances. The following chart shows the fund balance for both the utility fund and the general fund for the last six years. Over time, a strong net position is a good indicator of the financial position for the city. And the city maintains pledges to maintain reserves of 90 days or 25% of net budgeted operating expenditures. That is something we pledge by ordinance. The first chart on the top left side of the table shows you the fund balance in dollar amount for both the general fund, which is the red line, and the utility fund, which is the green line. The second chart shows the fund balance as the percentage of operating expenditures. For, for example, at the end of fiscal year, the city reported just under $8.7 million on assigned fund balance for the general fund. And that's the table with the red heading, the last column on the 2019. And the unassigned fund, fund balance for the general fund is similar to retained earnings. It represents the amount that has not been restricted or committed to, for example, debt service or any other financial obligation. It's not the same as cash. I want to highlight that. And for the utility fund, the unrestricted fund balance at your end fiscal year 2019 is $9.3 million. And it's as a percentage of the operating expense for the utility, utility fund is 73%. The strong unassigned and unrestricted fund balance is one of the major rationals for the rating agencies that we are able to maintain our high and strong ratings. And I also wanted to, I know you received the rating agency report, but one of the comments Fitch has made said that Fitch expects the city to maintain a high level of financial flexibility in a moderate economic downturn based on its satisfactory revenue raising capacity, adequate expenditure flexibility, and healthy financial cushion. So with that, I can answer any questions or turn the floor over to Daniel Hungerford so he can add additional comments and answer any questions.
Hey, Gabe. Why don't we go ahead and hear from Dan, okay, counsel, and we'll ask questions after that.
Good evening. I'm Daniel Hungerford with George Morgan and Sneed. Just want to go over real quick our auditors' reports. The comprehensive annual financial report, as Chris said, receives a certificate of achievement and excellence for financial reporting. And we've gone through, through this CAFR, and I believe it's going to get the certificate again this year. Our independent auditor's report is on page one. It's a standard unmodified opinion like we've issued in the past, says that your financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Our other reports, our government auditing standards report is on page 127 and 128. We did not have any findings of noncompliance or any internal control issues that we considered significant or material weaknesses. We didn't report anything in that, that report. Our other report starts on page 129. It's a report on compliance for each major program in internal control. What that is, is the, the $3 million grant for the airport fund, and then your funding that you get from the Water Development Board, Texas Water Development Board. It's federal funding that flows through. And because it's over 750,000, it's actually around 9 million this year that you spent. We had to do what's called a single audit. So it's a, a, uh, audit to make sure you complied with all the federal regulations. The major program this year was the capitalization, capitalization grants for clean water state revolving funds, which were, was the improvements at the wastewater plant. And we found that the city complied with all the requirements for that program. The audit went smooth. We didn't have any issues. I think Ava and her staff, they did a real good job getting everything prepared. A lot of work goes into gathering all the information we request, and they had everything together, so there were no delays or, or any issues with the audit. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Counsel, you have any questions for Daniel? Thank you. Ava, you got a question for Ava? Ava, it sounds like you did a good job, you and your staff, and did you feed them well? I mean, no.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel.
I have, I have a question for Ava. You said fund balance isn't the same as cash, so I don't really understand fund balance.
Maybe Daniel is better at answering that. But fund balance is almost like retained earnings. So basically, it's, it can be cash, most of it is cash, but I just wanted to make sure that you understand that it's not necessarily just cash. It's an asset portion what remains after all obligations, all commitments, and everything else is paid. So the city might have to sell some of its assets to come up with the unassigned fund balance.
Oh, okay.
So what's the percentage of assets versus liquid, liquid cash?
I don't know that percentage, but for a general fund, basically, it is very close. You can see it on page, it's right here, page 20. So general fund had about $10 million in cash, and utility fund is probably 80%.
The, the general fund is, it's closely, it's close to a current financial resources. So your assets that are going to be reported in the general fund are only your current assets. So your, your fund balance is going to be your current assets, so that's your current liabilities there. So the amount that you reported for the general fund, the eight, 8.6 million is, it's your current assets, that's your current liabilities. In the water and sewer fund, or in the utility fund, it's, it's a little different. In the water and sewer fund or in the utility fund, it's a little different. Government accounting is kind of a different animal. The current assets for the utility fund were sixty-one million. However, fifty million of that is restricted, and that includes about three million in receivables and a million and a half in inventory. So the unassigned or the unrestricted net position there is your current assets, really your current unrestricted assets, that's your current liabilities. It would get you pretty close to that number.
So in a way, we could look at this as what if money? What if things go terribly wrong? Where do we lean, right?
Well, this is, the numbers that she's kind of giving you, the unassigned fund balance and unrestricted fund balance, that's the number that you kind of have to begin the next year. That's what's going to roll forward to the next year that you kind of start with, that you can use for operations. That's going to be your cash and receivables that are going to come in pretty quick after you're in, plus the liabilities that you have to pay after the end of the year. So it's kind of what you're starting with at the beginning of the next year.
But we build up these reserves so that if appraisers don't come in, if our forecasts are off a little bit, it helps fill that gap.
Yes, that unrestricted is kind of your, as you said, cushion there. And that's, your requirement is about thirty, twenty-five percent, so you're at fifty-three and seventy-three, so you have a little bit more cushion built up. Part of that has to do with, you know, your revenues coming in, really growing, as Ava showed you, and controlling your expenses. And then also, I know in the utility fund, you know, you worked out the new electric rate, so that helped your reserve there.
On the utility fund specifically, so we're down three point eight percent for two thousand nineteen. And we lowered the rates. Do we not have, hold about the same margins? So why is the revenue down four percent when we're getting a better price at the wholesale level? And I thought we were holding kind of the same margins at the retail level.
So yes, our margins are actually held at a very strong level. Just because you see the revenue down, it's because we have reduced electric rate. But our operating expense is down tremendously for the electric power purchase.
So is it because everybody's using LED lights?
No, we're selling more.
No, they have a lower rate.
Oh, good.
Yeah, they have a lower rate, and fiscal year two thousand nineteen was the first year that fully, we were fully able to provide that lower rate. So that's the reason, when you compare it, the revenue is down. But if you look at the power purchase cost itself, and I believe it's on, let's see how fast I can maneuver in this book. It is on page twenty-six. It actually shows that our expenditures are down. Well, it doesn't have the year comparison to last year. You would need to have the book, but it's down about forty, fifty percent.
Does our difference in our metering make a difference?
Yes. So on the water, we have been tracking how much we are able to recover or really what's happening is that we are able to recognize what the actual consumption is, what's used. So we are billing at hundred percent, where before some of our meters weren't working correctly and the consumption wasn't captured. So we have been able to identify that we have been, the last three, four years since we have installed the water meters, recovered around two hundred sixty thousand, two hundred seventy thousand extra year just because of the new AMI system. Now we are in the process of changing out the electric meters, and I think we are one third down, one third done with that. Just wanted to make sure, agree to that. We will not see such a big difference in water, I mean, electric revenue as we have seen on the water side, but we have the ability to disconnect in-house now, so we don't have to drive out and do that anymore.
So if you had to estimate, so on the water, on the water meter project, if you had to estimate, how many thank you letters did we get from citizens for the free water that they got for decades? How many letters did we receive?
None.
Ballpark?
None.
Well, we didn't get one from you either, Councilmember.
I didn't get free water.
Oh, that's true, that's right.
We also, I mean, and we also do that with our electric meters. Do they make a difference too with our?
They're not going to make as much of a difference, but we are monitoring that as well. But the operational costs will go down just having the new AMI meters.
Mayor.
M. Rodriguez.
You know, I'm glad she showed us the electrical chart that we've gone down this year because, you know, most of the complaints are the costs of utilities that are provided by the city. And this graph actually depicts that we've lowered the electric rate for residents. And, you know, I mean, that's with the improvement of technology and also with the ability for the city to negotiate a better rate for the residents. So I think that's awesome, and hopefully that transpires with all the other utilities that we have. As technology, you know, gets better, we can, you know, provide that savings to the residents as well.
Mr. Kaufman, make a comment.
Could you go back to that slide on the revenue for the general fund, Ava?
Oh, I didn't do that.
Maybe not.
Sure. Where am I? What did you know?
The one before this one.
Oh, okay, I'm going there.
So, keep moving, there you go. I just wanted y'all to realize how our sales and use tax, so to speak, carries the mail for us. All the discussions in Austin about property tax and those issues, yeah, they do impact us about twenty percent of our budget. So our biggest revenue source is sales and use tax, and we're very fortunate in that. And that's why we need a stronger than normal fund balance of unrestricted cash, because should a recession occur, those numbers will shrink and we'll be more dependent upon reserve cash flow to be able to sustain our fixed costs. And so that's the things the rating agencies pick up on, and I think that's important for me to point that out to you.
Chris, I think with the new, also the new construction of, you know, Tuesdays morning and all that, five below, and I think with all those new construction, I think our sales and use tax will increase this following year.
You bet. I think we felt part of it in the last quarter of last year even, and it showed. But yeah, we need to continue working on economic development and seeing more stores and commercial growth. Someday, when we land that big manufacturer fish out there, that property valuation will go up astronomically compared to what housing can provide, that will cause us to be able to lower our property tax even more. So very blessed in a great community with great environment, economic environment with low taxes. All in, for all three taxing entities, it's a dollar ninety-five. It's just pretty competitive when you're trying to attract business here. I mean, that's what we need to continue to do, be the low guy out there.
Well, there's a lot to be said, though, about the housing, you know, when you build it, I mean, there's people that are even contractors that are supplying these houses locally, you know, so they're not going to the Metroplex to put the big box items in there, and they're putting them, they're buying them locally, because I'm talking to a lot of the folks in downtown, and that's where they're getting it. So that's helping that sales tax loss. Well, thank you, folks, for that presentation. Council, any more questions for? Okay, we'll move on to number seven. That was just a presentation, no action needed to be taken, other than thanking Ava and their crew for a great job.
Good job.
Our next one is to consider approving the engineering service agreement with KSA Engineering for the construction phase of the Granbury Regional Airport expansion. I'm going to turn this over to Chris Kaufman to give us a report on that, Chris.
As y'all are aware, we've been moving forward with KSA Engineering on our project. They've processed every, we've already got an agreement in place with them to get us to the point where we're at. They have prepared the bid documents and have advertised for bids, the dirt work for the project. And the agenda item this before you tonight is to hire KSA to finish the project from now till the end of when the runway is complete. So it's a recommendation to enter into an agreement with KSA Engineering for an amount not to exceed eight hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars. That includes engineering services, testing, onsite support until completion of the.
Wanted to spend a couple.
So we're not going to pay all this right now, but we also need to appropriate that. Should we approve to do this, we need to appropriate the funds, and so that's in this agenda item as well. I do have staff here, key staff, that can answer any questions. Pat and Michael Bother here. If you have any questions on this, we'd be happy to try to field those questions for you. Oh, we have KSA rep here as well.
Yeah, if I could introduce Chad Pennell from KSA. Over the next two and a half years, he'll be a fixture here in Granbury, spending a lot of time. So you'll probably all see a lot of Chad. Any questions?
Well, where's your presentation?
That was it.
That was it. Pretty simple.
That's great, Pat.
Yeah, I mean, we're simply moving from what was the design phase of the project to the construction phase and hiring the engineering team to support the project.
Council, you got any questions for Pat or Chris on the staff or KSA on this? I'm going to go ahead and combine both of these, but Council, I'll entertain a motion then to approve the, approve the not to exceed eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and three hundred ninety-three dollars agreement with KS Engineering that will provide the engineering services as needed and also make the recommendation to amend the operating budget for the airport fund by utilizing the general fund, fund balance to pay the KSA Engineering Service Agreement.
So moved.
And I have that motion, but Council Mobley, and second by person Reiner. Council, any more discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you very much, Pat. And welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Next item is item number eight, discuss the city of Granbury Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map and Provide Staff Direction of Seeking Supplemental Consulting for future of the future development as it relates to the multifamily development areas. Chris, can you give us a report on that?
Yes, sir, thank you. I just wanted to put this on here. If you read the memo, it's telling what we've got. When we did our comprehensive plan in two thousand sixteen, there was a component in there that analyzed how much multifamily capacity our community could accommodate. And it was fifty-nine units per year. And right now, counting what's been built, what's been approved to be built, and what is currently going through the plating process, equals about six hundred multifamily units. And so I'm throwing the red flag in as a caution, saying, you know what, I think we've reached our capacity. But because we try to be methodical in what we're doing, it might be wise to tap the brakes a little bit on changing the land use plan. One of the reasons for that is the city can no longer involuntary annex property. And so we're no longer, from a planning standpoint, a rural community. We are an urbanized community because we're blocked in on all sides, and what gets built in our community is who we are forever now. And so whereas we used to have the mindset that, hey, somebody's wanting to build something here, let's accommodate them, let's be real builder friendly, and let's move forward with them and get the best that we can out of this project. And it might be time to think about tapping the brakes and looking, does this meet our land use plan that's been developed? Is this land that they're talking about building high-density housing on in our plan? And whenever it doesn't show to be in our plan, reject the plan to move forward with that multifamily project, unless it makes sense in some other way other than what our land use plan that we've adopted says. Now, we can hire a consultant if you need me to. We can reach back to Freezing Nichols, and they hired Chris Clontz with Catalyst, or Jason Clontz with Catalyst, and they did that economic study in that chapter for the housing. And we could reengage them and look at this again. And so I'm just looking for direction. And also to, you know, throw in the red flag and say, stop, and let's talk about this a minute in a formal setting instead of just wondering why we keep doing what we're doing. And, but I think the impetus now has been, what I've seen coming from developers is even higher density than what we've dealt with in the past. And so we need to have the confidence that staff, when they show up and they don't make a recommendation to approve, that's a signal saying that, you know what, you're going to have to change the land use plan, the comp plan, and the zoning to be able to accommodate something. That's a triple warning sign for us that, you know what, this is not the direction that we adopted in two thousand sixteen, and as we're moving forward, maybe we need to stop and reassess that. So happy to answer any questions you may have. I don't have a problem, I want to go on record, I do not have a problem with what the legislature did. Yeah, it limited us, it makes us think in new ways that we haven't in the past. But at the end of the day, we're responsible for what we can be responsible for. We can't be upset about what somebody else does to our city. What we've got to be responsible for is what we do for our city. And so here we are in an environment where the only kind of annexation you can have is a drawn-out voluntary annexation process now. Used to, you could do it and receive a petition and annex it all at once. And so it's not that simple anymore. But still, we're limited on what we can look like fifty years from now, forever. And we need to be looking down the road, and it's not about us, and it's not about now, it's about the future generation in the future. So, that being said, I'll answer any questions.
Well, Chris, short of a consultant, are you okay with just reaching out with the Freezing Nichols and researching this and doing that on your own, or do you see a need for a consultant?
I don't see a need for a consultant if through this agenda item, everybody understands that we do have a different mindset of what we adopted. We've been receiving projects as they come to us and amending because there's a request. So if we have the will to say no, I don't see a need for a consultant. But if you need more evidence to make you feel comfortable to say no, then I would suggest let's reengage those two consulting firms and put together another chapter on housing capacities.
Council, any questions to Chris on this item, or anybody want to make a motion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Council Mobley.
I'd just like to point out, we're not alone in this dilemma that we're faced with. You know, and the fact that we're the ninth quickest-growing county, while we want to put, that's a feather in our hat, it's also a burden because anybody can drive along three seventy-seven, fifty-one, one forty-four and realize we have some issues. And what have we spent, what do we spend on a comprehensive plan in two thousand sixteen?
We spent about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars on that process.
So that goes with the fact that, why hire a financial planner and not listen to their advice? Why put a plan together? Why hire an attorney and not listen to their advice? Why do we bang our head against this wall when we're asking for help? When we get the help, we tend to turn the other way and say, well, we're going to make one exception, and then it turns into an exception every meeting. So I would love to see us stick with the plan because it makes sense. And in north, the northern Tarrant County, they're dealing with a much, much bigger problem than we are, and they've actually put a hold on this. And I would hate to see us get to that point going forward, but if we're not careful, I mean, it looks like we've built ten years' worth of units in four and a half years.
Yes, sir.
Or three and a half years. At this rate, golly, we're all going to be swimming in community swimming pools and parking under carports, which, hey, I did it for years, but that's not for everybody. And I don't know that, you know, when you use the term we're urbanized because we're surrounded, I think that speaks volumes. surrounded, I think that speaks volumes.
Need urban planning instead of rural planning.
Yeah.
And I, and I don't think that puts a hold on our growth. It just puts a growth where we, where we really need it and the type of growth that we need.
Well, it enables us to stick with the plan that's already in place.
Counsel, any more discussion on this?
Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez.
I don't say this very often, but I agree with Tony.
There's a lot of people at this diocese that agree with me.
No, I think, I think that's correct. You know, we've had a lot of, you know, condos, you know, multifamily housing development go up. And we continue to see that go up. I think we just need to, like you said, tap the brakes a little bit. When you have high-density type residents within the city, then that's, that just makes the traffic even worse, spreading that out into the more urban areas or counties or outside the city limits. And it's not going to make it better, but it's going to spread out that traffic. And locations of these, of these mixed-use or high-density residential or medium-density residential, location is going to be the factor of how it's going to look with the traffic patterns in the future. And that's something that we really need to consider, since we already have a traffic issue.
Counsel, any more comments? Councilman Mobley, you got a motion on this?
You know, I can make a recommendation that you just acknowledge the agenda item or direct me to.
It just calls for discussion.
Yeah.
There is no motion.
Unless you want to go forward and have the city manager reach out to the consultant.
Provide staff.
I don't know that.
I don't think we did.
Like I said, I think if we have a plan in place, the consultant, I mean, the worst thing the consult, consultant could do, in my opinion, is say, let's do another plan, because that means a 10-year plan lasted three and a half years. And what's the point in doing that if we're just going to change the, we're going to change it every three and a half years?
Like a shell game, isn't it?
That's right.
I agree.
And then at that point, hey, then we have no plan.
So we'll leave it in discussion, leave it in discussion and.
I think, I think.
And look at it.
Worth the plan.
Right.
Thank you.
No action taken on number eight.
It's what I needed, some direction. Thank you.
You got it.
We've got a lot more coming.
I think planning and zoning need to be briefed out as well.
They do. Item number eight is to consider making an appointment for the Ethics Commission to fill a vacant seat. One vacant seat. And Counsel, I think we have three applicants. You got a Rod Reyes Jr., Reyes, a Roy Owen, and a.
Paul Petty.
There's one here, a Paul Petty. So Counsel, I think everybody, has everybody had a chance to look over these applications? If so, I'll entertain a motion, a recommendation to fill that spot.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wadley.
I would like to nominate Rod Reyes for that position.
Rod Reyes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez.
I second that.
Okay, we've got a.
Well, I'll also nominate.
You also nominate, okay, we got.
Not second. I'll also.
Any other nominations here? Let me put it that way. Well, here and none, that makes that pretty easy. We'll make a motion to nominate Rod Reyes and a second by Councilman Rodriguez. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Rodriguez is our new Ethics Commission person. At this time, I'll now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened in open session and all our members are present. The City Council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections, Section 551-071, consultation with the attorney, and Section 551-087, deliberation regarding economic development. The Council will now go into executive session. Executive session. Counsel, do you have any more comments or items you'd like to discuss? Here and none, the council meeting is now adjourned.